Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm calling the meeting to order of the Planning Board for July 22, 2024 at 6:32 PM. Would like a roll call vote, please. Carol, who's present?
Lance McNally present.
Andrew Shepherd present.
Robert Carron present.
And Laura Schifrin present. Would you all join me in pleasurable intentions, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, we'd be calling five veterans and all of those currently serving and our first responders. If I could sing like lead Greenwood, I would do a rendition, but I can't.
Oh, you can drop.
Um, sort of additions. I'm just gonna introduce Patrick. Good evening, Patrick, and welcome for joining us. We're thankful and we just thank you for your service. Okay, 1.5. Uh, we did get minutes for June 10th, June 18th, June 24th, July 2nd, and July 8th. Do you all have a chance to review them?
I do.
And entertain a motion. Do you want to do them all or do you want to do them separately?
I would abstain from the ones I wasn't present at, um, but otherwise I did read through them all.
Okay.
It felt relatively comfortable.
You don't have to attend to approve, by the way.
I'll approve.
I'd like to just approve them all.
All at the same time? Okay. Is there a second?
I have something.
All right. Any discussion, additions, dilutions, corrections, or none? We'll take. I don't have to do a roll call now because everybody's here. Okay?
Oh, you don't have to.
You just have to say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Stains?
Uh, I abstain.
Okay. All right, one extension. No one follows to everybody else's side. Uh, and Patrick, um, I did need to go over my additions. So if someone is, you're welcome to participate in the meetings. Um, unless someone is absent, which at which point I can then appoint you as a voting member, that's when you could vote. But in a regular session that you're attending and participating in, you just can't vote unless somebody says yes. And I will tell you that's coming up. So. Um, uh, ready? And we got the vote. Everybody said aye. Right. Beth, do you have that 1.6 administrative report?
Yeah.
If we can get that in before the 6:45. Oh, we have a 6:35. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 6:35 and so it is. Um, Sally Thurber?
So I'll abstain and then I'll be back for the next point.
Does he have to leave the room? No.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be.
It's cleaner if he leaves.
Yeah.
Okay. Sally, do you wanna approach? If it's an update? Pardon? Do you wanna give us an update?
So, uh, yeah, we, uh, a year and a half ago, we contracted with a engineer to do the site plan and uh, there's quite a few mistakes on it. Uh, and I won't go into it, but it was a mess. So, um, I went and got another engineer um, to do it and that contract started at the end of April. And, um, that was to do the front, the vestibule, the ADA compliant ramp, stairs, and, um, the sidewalk in front. So, uh, but to do all that, he wanted to do the back too. And then it, I guess there was a lot of mistakes everywhere. So he's doing the whole thing all over again. And a couple of days ago, he gave me, um, a finish date of eight weeks from now. So that means we won't have the plan in hand until probably maybe September sometime.
Okay.
So we can't do anything until then.
Okay. Um. Well, we can't. So the extension or the permit itself that was originally granted after a back and forth, um, expired June 30th. So is this your third engineer now?
No, second.
Dillis was always your first engineer?
He was the first engineer.
Okay. Oh, you, all right. You had started before that, though.
She submitted her own plan initially and then we asked for the engineer plans.
Okay. That's pleasure of the board.
Um, well, I'm very, this is, there were so many things that we had reviewed in first engineers' plans, which generated more questions. And then there was changes to the building that the first engineer was supposed to address. And there were documents from the state highway for approval that we have still yet to receive. So in that perspective, and the extensions that have been provided, um, I think it may be worth considering reapplying for a whole new permit. Um, because A, what's happened at the building uh, is different than was originally reviewed at this board. And I'm not even sure that the building department's aware of the changes from when it was originally applied for. So the whole thing is, I mean, how do we know that this, does this, how do we know that everything was communicated to the previous end of the year is now the new engineer is aware of? And, you know, there were a lot of issues and it took a long time to resolve. And we were down to the final approval of what was, um, worked through. And that, you know, there was a progression of engineer drawings that Sally provided, responding to all the things we were concerned about. And we had, I thought, given a approval on that site plan subject to certain items. And none of them was updating that front area. The other one was for the confirmation from the state.
Right.
Um, and so it's really perplexing to know why there was a need to change the engineer now when we're almost there and only those two items were remaining.
May I speak to that? I'm Sally's, um, office manager and I've been helping her with that. I actually got a call from Mass DOT a few weeks ago informing me that Dillis had not touched any of the questions on the plan. They had told us we were gonna have our permit in December, but it shows on record that they had stopped working on it. They had just never followed through with it. Um, the DOT email said that they would waive one of the questions, which was moving the driveway. They've done their look-through and the driveway is fine where that is. I've been in contact with Bob Garci about the vestibule. He was ready to sign off the permit on that, but we don't have it on the plan. Um, that was originally, Dillis was supposed to do that originally and he forgot. Um, the new engineer, Dillis won't help us. He won't help us. Um, we found that he has been, I probably shouldn't say, there are issues. We're not gonna deal with him anymore. He's extra billing things he's not doing that he said were done, but the DOT confirmed. None of it has been done.
Well, the issues with the engineer are finally comes out some issues.
Right.
Um, so now, if, now I think we have a new engineer.
Yes.
And documents have to be decided with his stamp on it, um, so that we have an opportunity to review it. I would encourage with your new engineer that you completely, sound comprehensively everything that this board has requested so that we don't have to exhaust ourselves again.
Yeah. He has all the original documentation with all the notes and things like that. It took us a little bit to talk to him too because he was leery of switching in the middle of a project. So we had to explain to him, I don't wanna say a lot of details on.
It doesn't matter.
It does not matter. But what does matter is, um, by changing engineering, all the documents that have previously been submitted are not gonna be appropriate now. So.
You, you submitted a document on July 10th dated July 9th and named your engineer. So did he wait until today to tell you that it's gonna be eight weeks or did he tell you?
He started running over the plans and they were trying to work with Dillis to get the CAD drawings over. Uh, but Dillis is refusing to release the CAD drawings too. Um, so he now has to start from scratch and when he was going through, they had already come out and they've done a ton of the surveying and things. And while they were running their numbers, they found several issues that won't work that Dillis had put on his site plan. So it's gonna take him longer to correct the site plan.
So, um, I'm trying to understand this. So are there issues with the plan or there are issues to the execution of the plan?
Well, on our part, it was the execution because things appeared that weren't on the plan that we had approved.
So just to give a quick summary, uh, this started with the preliminary sketchings that we needed. So, and it's also a product of a building department that didn't have the documents they needed or whatever. And the work was started without everything being approved.
But did the planning board approve?
Uh, no. The planning board never approved anything. We reviewed several submissions and each one we had different standards or requirements that had to be met based on the circumstances. So at the last presentation, um, we were.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right here. I'm sorry. We're at 6:45, which is a continuation of a public hearing. And so your appointment now is over that time, but we would like you to come back and speak with us if you can wait. Okay. I have to physically at 6:45 do the continuation. Okay? Um, you're next.
Sit down here.
Sure.
It's been comfortable.
You know what? I wouldn't sit there because Andrew's gonna come there.
You can sit over here if you want. How's that?
Let me get Andrew. Andrew? Andrew? Okay.
I'll be keeping my schedule. I'm getting hung up on all this stuff. I'd like to call the continuation of the public hearing for 108 Fitchburg Road on July 22nd, 2024 at 6:45 PM. Age-restricted development, site plan review, special permit, stormwater management permit. So what we're gonna do now is, um, have the applicant, uh, give us your updates. Uh, I understand from Beth that you did submit some updates on you of revised plan and all that. So would you please present that to us now?
So, um, Mr. Stoddard took a personal day today. Uh, the emails came through midday to ask for some printed copies. Um, I never had a chance to get over there and do that. So I believe that this was gonna be continued anyways today.
Yeah.
So I'll have all the printed copies in Beth's office this week, but, um, Mr. Stoddard did the revisions for the stormwater. He was understanding it goes back to Beth and not to, to the engineer, to the third party. He sent it to you. Okay. That's the way he did it or it was done to him. So that's what he figured. Okay. So they have it. They're gonna review the stormwater, um.
Peer review.
Peer review. Yeah. They're gonna do the stormwater, uh, part of it. Um, and Beth, can you put that up on, on the screen or do you want, do you guys wanna talk about that stuff that he did?
Are, are you planning to continue?
I think we were all.
Well, we have to because of peer review.
Yeah.
So that, he's just informing the board.
Okay.
The peer reviewed documents have already gone to them. And so for the next meeting, we'll continue it again.
Yeah.
But just an update.
It's just a, an update. We did some, um, a couple of things that were asked of last meeting, the dumpster, the walkway to it, um, the mailbox.
Artley, may I have a screen sharing? Excellent. Would you like the, um, response letter to, is that what you're looking to?
If you can go in depth with it or, or just touch, you know, we just did a couple of things and we're waiting for peer review. Um, there was a couple of calculations that had to be done. Um, from what I understand, those were all sent to them. So they'll probably get back to us in the next week-ish, I'm assuming, peer review. And then we can just hit it all with one last meeting. But if you see, if you see or if there was any other questions that come up between last meeting and this meeting, um, glad to take care to take those on.
Any updates on the pool?
So, um, one mistake is I thought Rick Metcalf had said to talk to Carla downstairs. It's Kara. So I was chasing the wrong person.
It's Kara.
Kara is the pool inspector for Nesho Board Health. I thought it was Carla when I saw the email. Well, she.
Kara is new.
Kara's new and Carla was like, you're not, you're not supposed to be looking towards me like someone else. And then I read it again. I'm like, oh. So, um, Wednesday afternoon is tentative planned for her to walk through it with me to see if we can do semi-public or just keep it to one of the units.
Okay.
That should be Wednesday afternoon. We're trying to hash out the time. But my mistake on that part of it was last week. I was like, Rick tells me to contact you.
Well, you've got time anyway, but.
Can you ask Artley to, Artley?
Yeah, so who wants to, who wants to screen share?
Yeah.
Uh, Beth, I see if, uh.
Hold on. She's not logged in. She's logging in.
That's the login first.
Oh, can you do the screen share?
Yeah, I'm gonna log into the meeting and it's gonna take me a minute.
If you miss login.
Yeah, because I have to actually log into the meeting.
Any updates on a legal part? A little condo?
Condo docs?
Yeah. You're gonna be one or two or?
I think it'd be one. I haven't moved forward with a lot of, a couple of things because I wanna see if those are gonna get approved. Like the architectural drawings, those will be all code compliant for, for the interest or didn't with a zero curb entry and stuff like that. But don't go forward with the architectural plans until we know that we're, same with, um, Board Health and Rick Metcalf. We're not submitting the
Right.
um, disposal system until we know or move forward. Um, but those will be all in each department. Those will all be approved and the COs will be signed off at that point and we'll apply the restricted bylaw to those who, uh, each departments.
Did you communicate with the architect, um, the concern about the elevation percentage?
Those, I believe they're on the, the engineer.
Right. Well, both of them have to coordinate that.
Correct. I think the engineering side of it is, is what the planning board has jurisdiction on. Then the building department will take over on the no step entry. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
That, that you should be able to, yes, I see it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Site plan. We guys, site plan.
So moving down a little bit, I think he drew a, uh, a walkway over to the dumpster in the front of the house. We know the depth of trees along, uh, Fitchburg Road are gonna be removed. They're not being planted. They're already removed. It's down a little further. Yeah. So on the left side of the left driveway, we have a mailbox, uh, community mailbox, um, drawing there, the dumpster and pathway to it. And, you know, I'll have all these printed next couple of days. Drop onto Beth. You guys can look at it. Just, it wasn't happening today. And then, uh, Mr. Stoddard took care of all the comments from his department. There was, uh,
Okay.
I think that we've been here, but I have those up particularly. Any other questions on that had, had arisen?
I only presented that discussion, uh, knowing it's under the building department, but many instances, the, uh, the site consultants are not aware of the code requirements for different parts of the building.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm saying that to alert you ahead of time so there won't be any.
I think we're, we are aware of that. We're trying, we talked about last and originally we talked about all the set the grades.
The architects should know how to get that out. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see it to be a, a, a big issue at all because we can step up into the garage. It's, it's the main walkway to get zero.
I think people are still confused of what the question is there.
Okay.
But the, the standard for the building code has nothing to do with age standards. Is that the garage slab has to be six inches below any occupied living space. So that's the general code per se. And then when I looked at the site plan, the elevations, um, that were recorded on the site plan for the house.
Yeah.
Um, indicated that that would have surfaces a problem. So that's why somebody has to look at that.
Okay. And that's, that's for gas rigs, right?
It's for, yes, for gas fumes.
Yeah.
Elevations.
Yeah, to prevent the house from blowing boom.
Just a garage.
Do you have the questions of the applicant? Beth, have there been any other updates to referrals or anything? Can the department send anything in?
Um, at this point, we, uh, the period you mentioned, it would take about a week to turn around. That's your thoughts. We didn't, we didn't actually, we have everything.
So Office 12 would be the next.
Okay.
Office 12 at 6:45. So I'll ask for a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing for 108 Fitchburg Road to August the 22nd at 6.
12.
August the 12th at 6:45 PM.
Is there a second? Okay. And Andrew seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll have that stuff this week.
Okay, Sally, we'll just look at. Hi, Andrew. Okay, so also in the interim, we've had, well, the building inspector left the original when this all started. And then there's probably been two interns before Bob or including Bob. I think we're in like our fourth one since, uh, the beginning of this.
One question. What is the, is the, is the building currently serving animals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. She opened before she had a permit or anything. It's, it's been in operation. And it was, I mean, if you go back through the records, it's a long story.
I, well, I know that it originally it started right, when I was on the board, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because I just saw Ian was on the, um, it goes back.
Not, just. That's not important.
There wasn't approval.
Okay.
It was April 10th, 23. No, he would.
Maybe it was for something else.
That was, yeah.
Okay.
It was a different report. I mean, there were other members of the board.
Okay. So I was, I was just trying to understand if there was a site plan, a plan. Where were the issues found? Were the issues not identified originally by the planning board or why, why are there issues?
Why are there issues?
Because.
The original site plan was approved by you people.
Okay.
But it didn't include.
And then we added a vestibule, which I thought was allowed with the original, uh, building permit.
Yep.
And I found out the hard way that it's not. So, um, uh, I, uh, Dillis was, or somebody, somebody, Dillis, uh, was asked to put it on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I think he did. He did a, it was, uh, it was all messed up.
Wow.
It was a mess, an absolute mess. And the DOT, um, I had paid a fee to Dillis because they wanted to deal with DOT. I think three times. And I know that the DOT permit isn't very expensive, but it, it ran into thousands from Dillis. And we never got the DOT permit. So, um, and then Dillis wanted more money, bringing it up over $20,000. And I said, wait a minute. If we did, uh, what was on the plan that he drew, there would be a lot of mistakes and you guys would be going crazy. So, um, I got a new engineer, got an estimate from them. They were very professional. And they've been working on it since, but they're, they're, they're kinda straight out apparently with a lot of jobs.
Um.
Man, we did approve?
We did approve a plan.
Yeah.
Subject to certain requirements. One of them was a release from state.
Mm-hmm.
Which we wanted in writing.
From DOT, I see.
So she's correct. We did approve a plan. But the plan we approved had the handicap access to weight where she decided to put a waiting room or a vestibule or a lobby. So now that handicap parking and the ramps cannot be delivered to what is there.
What I'm, what I'm trying to understand very, if someone could make it very briefly, what are the current issues? Are the issues vestibule? Are the issues DOT approval? And?
Those two things.
Pardon?
You aren't gonna go any further.
Just.
Those two things.
Those two things.
Those are the only two things that are of issue.
But those two things integrate with a lot of elements of the plan.
And very well discussed at the planning board meeting.
Right.
Cause we did a lot of discussions on the entrance and the incoming of the ramp for the handicap accessible. So if you could find the meeting dates for that, there was a lot of discussion on that. There was no vestibule. There was no front building on the plan. There was no discussion of a front building on the plan.
So is there a vestibule there now?
Yes.
Tactile.
Okay.
10 by 10 feet, well within the setback. That's all been worked. That's all been worked out.
I understand, I understand, I'm just trying to understand um
So
where we are in terms of the deltas between the plan that was originally submitted
Right.
and what the issues are.
Had not the addition been put on, then that plan would have been approved awaiting a document from the private transportation.
Right.
So the owner elected to change that.
Wasn't an oversight in the planning board meeting because we discussed it all.
So what does it mean, and I don't know if you could help me with this, but what does it mean in terms of going forward with an extension to, I imagine, have the new engineers update the plans and present them to the board in that timeframe versus starting the process all over?
I think as far as this board goes, it it doesn't matter as long as we have a plan that we can agree with and is serviceable and meets all the requirements, okay? So whether she wants to change consultants or not. Um however, this hearing is about an extension on this.
An extension in time, correct, not a building extension.
But it's an extension on a different site plan now, right?
I, I, I understand that, I'm just saying that, you know, it seemed to me that unless it was I mean, to make the applicant, what's the effort if they have to start from scratch versus just doing an extension?
Well, she said that the guy's starting from scratch.
He's not starting, he's he's re-measuring to make sure everything is okay.
That's from scratch.
Well, he said he wanted to do that.
Well, I would, if I was stamping a drawing, do I want my own information, so I don't have a problem.
I don't either have it, what does it mean to the, to, to the, to Sally in terms of she's requ- asked, asking for an eight-week extension? As opposed to, no, we're not going to give you an eight-week extension, um we're just gonna start from scratch.
Again? Is that gonna take another two years?
I don't know, I don't
Is that the goal point? You told me at the last meeting, I was never gonna get this project done. And here we are, two years on.
Only because you changed the project.
No, I didn't.
Okay, stop it.
The board did ask for a modification of this special permit. That's what you asked for, and she's asking to extend that special permit. And then when she comes back with a complete design, she will file that application for modification of a special permit. It's an application process, but
It's a minor, it's a minor thing, I just want an extension because the engineer can't do it in a two-week period, he wants two months.
That's understandable.
That is, that is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and did Beth characterize the situation correctly?
I couldn't hear her.
Could you, could you say what you said?
When you, when you finish with the new revised site plan, you'll file it with the modification to a special permit, which you already have, which we're hopefully the board will extend right now. So they extend what you have, we're building on what you, you know, provided, and then when you have the new one, you just file the modification and everything's
So that would be an extension.
Well, no, the extension is a special permit that you currently have, but
So we have to, we have to vote on the one that's expired to extend that.
Exactly, yeah, it's, it's, we'll secure this, but it's, it makes sense to do that.
Can we, can we just do it as efficiently as possible? Because this is an unsightly looking dump right at the beginning of the town.
Agreed.
And I, I just, it, it's not good for the town.
Yeah, I'm, I'm
It makes the town look bad.
Resolved is
Yeah, but we didn't do it.
I didn't do it.
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
But you did, when you put something on that wasn't on the plan.
This has been dragged out for two years now, nobody, everybody gives me wrong information, I do what you asked me to do, and then you're saying, no, we gotta do it this way.
You did not do what you were, said you were going to do.
But let's not recap this whole thing. What are the dates in September, please?
It's gotta be September the ninth, twenty-third. I'll just double check.
That'll be two months.
I have to log into my
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, okay, so
So eight weeks if he gets it done, just to, to look, put it out there, would be mid-September, because he called us Friday and said
This is past that, this is uh one, two, three, fourth Monday, the fourth Monday in September.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware, I'm just scared.
So it's all of August?
Yeah.
Four weeks. Eight. Eight weeks.
And all we have to do in that time
It's nine weeks from now.
Is get the final plan brought to you in that timeframe?
To, for review, yes.
For review, and then what?
Well, if everything's satisfied and we feel confident it is, then you get approved.
Okay, so do we have an extension until the end of September?
I
You have an extension until the next meeting, and then you can decide, the board will decide with what you present. So that's September twenty-third.
Wait, excuse me, uh she's just told us she can't have anything to show us for eight weeks.
That's nine weeks from now.
So um from my perspective, what has to be happening there is the new consultant has to coordinate what's built there now first, and identify all the elements about that, and then come up with a satisfactory handicap access to that area and integrate that with what else was salvageable from the earlier plan. So I'm questioning whether eight weeks would even be enough.
What is the pleasure of the board? I would like to go longer than eight weeks, so I'm trying to agree with you that I think it's gonna take
Well, it's pointless to have hearings and just keep extending them and extending them. But I, uh, Madam Chairman, I think you're correct, the current one has expired, so we have to I think our only option is to give an extension, as far as I see.
To when?
Um, well, if she thinks she can do it in eight weeks, then that's fine.
I'm not doing it, it's the engineer, so I, I can't speak to
I'm not, I'm just worried because he's
Would you do need more time, we'd just like more time.
I would like more time, I just wanna uh
We can do October seventh?
Avoid all of this
We do too, I mean, if we're not here to be obstructive, we just have the job
Would ten weeks be good for you guys?
I'm more comfortable with that, I'm just nervous where he said eight weeks and then if he finds something else.
We'll just go ten weeks.
If we, if we go ten weeks, they can certainly come in earlier, correct?
I would think so, so, yes. Yes, I, I tried to pin him down, but, you know.
Why don't we make that more manageable?
Okay.
So we'll give, I would suggest, or consider
I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
That we give her an extension for ten weeks, she has the option if the um if she has the completed stuff or she wants an earlier review, she will be entitled to it at an earlier time.
Sounds good.
Okay, I, I will second that motion, thank you.
What are the dates in October, October eighth, just a minute.
Would it make sense to have some sort of interim update, like, is the engineer gonna meet his ten, ten-week commitment?
He said he would he would do it in eight weeks.
But, I mean, in four weeks' time, we realize it's gonna take twelve weeks or six weeks.
Oh God, I wish I knew.
Alright, so
I wish I could, I wish I could say.
It would be, it would be helpful that within the tech, ten-week period, he does come up with a plan or anything, so that when we have the ten-week expiration date, everything's already been resolved and reduced.
It would just be, it's gonna get to ten weeks, and then like, I need, I need six more, so I need eight weeks.
Yeah, I just, I'm just going to, maybe I'm very naive, but you know, being an engineer, um I would say that if I give a customer a date, then I had better meet that date, because if I consistently don't, I will get a very bad reputation and not be in business anymore. So, because I can understand how you guys can't, can't make a decision on whether it's gonna be six weeks is reasonable or twenty weeks, I mean, that's not your expertise, relying upon the expertise of an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Generally, when people say they're gonna have a delivery date, in their mind, if they're a good business person, they're gonna deliver early. They're not gonna deliver late, or certainly you're gonna know beforehand.
That's how I built my business. Um, yeah, um, makes sense.
Yeah.
So ten weeks is September thirtieth, we are not meeting. So eleven weeks is October seventh.
Oh, I see.
That's good. And if you get it done earlier, then we can do it earlier.
Yes, I hope so.
Okay.
I'll try.
Cause I know that you wanna get it done.
I want to, I can't do another winter in that mud hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just public hearing. No, this is an appointment that you just need to make a decision on, and the request for extension.
Okay, so I entertain a motion that includes an extension of the existing special permit to October seventh. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we extend the special permit until October the seventh when we meet.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we extended your special permit to October seventh, and you can let that know as you get the plans earlier. I know we can accommodate earlier, we will, we're working on it. Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Alright, I have to call Andrew.
Oh, yeah, please.
You guys yell Andrew.
Yeah. So Andrew is back, we'll do your administrative report, please, okay, as soon as he's back. Okay, he's back. So one point six administrative report.
So for applications and anticipated applications. Twenty-seven Skans Lane, the request for certificate of completion, the stormwater is still pending. Um, the owner has updated that his engineer will be supplying the as-built uh stormwater management system next week, so I think the board can expect to be able to act on that at the August twelfth meeting. Main street is all done. Um, one oh eight Pittsburgh Road is all done, so I'm not updating on this. Department, introductory departmental approvals, building permit applications that were reviewed and approved. Thirty-five Wallace Hill Road, thirty-six Parker Hill Road, we're debt two sixteen Old Turnpike Road for a detached garage, and one oh one Highland Street for a pool. Site visits and compliance, ninety-eight one hundred West Meadow Road. Owner has been advised that stormwater management permit is required, and we have word that the engineer is um working on it. One oh eight, one ten, and one twelve West Meadow Road. The board did grant the stormwater permit, uh everything's issued, the decision was sent. Uh what we're waiting for now is the proof of recording and finalized write-of-entry agreement from the owners of one oh eight West Meadow Road. So I'm keeping an eye out for those things. Twenty-seven Mason Road, some of you were not on the board at the time that this special permit was issued. It is a dog boarding business, and the planning board issued a special permit, the site planner due special permit, and the Z B A also issued a huge special permit. And both of those special permits came with some conditions that we're just following up on. So we should expect a letter was sent to the owner with just a request to follow up on those uh conditions of approval. And we're also board a health condition of approval for that one, so we're reaching out for all departments on that. Uh master plan. The, oh, this uh, for implementation for the board, a planning assistant grant application has been submitted to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to fund a review of the Townsend site plan review special permit by law. Uh, I'm just gonna read a little bit so the board knows. Uh, the ongoing project between M R P C and the Town of Townsend to develop zoning to comply with the M B T A Communities Act revealed a section of the zoning bylaw that we fear pursues development of a compliant bylaw. Townsend zoning contains unique element, section one forty-five forty-two, the site plan review special permit. Site plan review is defined as a special permit in Townsend's bylaw. This means that any land uses or development projects, even though designated by right under the Town's use regulations, become subject to a discretionary special permit if they meet a broad set of triggers, many of which would set off, uh would be set off by residential development under the M B T A Communities Act. There's no true site plan approval process in Townsend. One in which the applicant can expect an approval with conditions, as long as the project meets the requirements of zoning in Townsend. In order to comply with the act, this section must be realized. So that's the reasoning behind it, I think many of you remember when Joe Royal from M R P C came and talked to you about that. So hopefully we'll get that grant. Um and the master plan implementation table will be updated and discussed in planning board meetings. Uh, the M V P H M P plan. I did go through it, um and I updated the areas where the board has contributed to very responsible uh activities, and I put a copy on the table, you can go through that if you want, or make up more ideas on that. The Planning Board Member SharePoint Resource Folder has been published, and this is basically been developed to serve as a resource library that includes information for new members and updates for veteran members and self-paced learning opportunities. M B T A Communities Law zoning compliance, Town Council has a copy of the most recent draft M B T A multi-family overlay overlay district bylaw, and we did return a few comments, these comments are in your folders. Land uses preparing to submit to the Executive Office of Housing and Living Home Communities once the final overlay district is agreed upon. So we, for M R P C review and recommend, recommended revision of District Three to trust that they reanalyzed it two weeks ago. And um they're going to give recommendation regarding the value of that district in terms of possibility for Townsend to overlay this district. Um, the planning board is meeting with select boards, M R P C and Town Council on August twelfth to discuss and finalize the M B T A related district election and complete timeline. Then in the Townsend schedule for the tunnel is all services managed independently, and we're happy to say that Patrick Wanta is joining us today as associate member of the planning board, and I'd like to thank him for joining the board. Vacation update, I will be on vacation from July twenty-ninth to August so my, I'll be back the day that we meet. And I will be handling administrative duties for that meeting, so if you're not, I will be
So on that date, the twelfth, we have a joint meeting?
Yes, uh I have to verify that, cause from what I understand, I've heard, I, I understand Chaz will be in attendance, I know Town Council is confirmed. I don't know about the other two members of this left board yet. So if they are attending, we'll make it a drink, if not, it'll be Chaz and um Town Council and M R P C. So we'll have everybody, all of it, everyone
And is Adam still the Town Council?
Yeah, he is, yeah, yeah, and he will sign on the bylaw. Okay, okay, and as far as training update, I'm making a foundations of emergency management class in August. I have the dates, August, there, full day is August twentieth through the twenty-second, and again the following week, August twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. We'll be monitoring office details. And S J T C did announce Route Two Portal And MJT C did announce Route Two corridor study is open for public comment, period is open until July twenty-fifth. That's all.
Okay. So next on our agenda is work session, do you have any updates? Uh, well, I guess you already told us. Um, what we're gonna be doing on the MBTA Communities on the bylaw.
Oh, yeah, I can say really good that.
And, um, HMP and MVP and master plan?
Yeah.
Planning board implementation progress? Is Jessica, she's not.
If you want to review, uh, what I printed, I did print it out for you, the table, but it, it's very small print, so.
Oh, the, uh, PHM, the Hazard Negation Point Table, yeah, cause I'm doing that Thursday.
So I went through the status update, and I just wrote in all the things that I can remember the planning board has done, um, over the past few years towards those goals. You know, they're quite good in there, they're a lot of progress actually. But, uh, it's very hard to read, I'm sorry, I printed it out, it's super small.
I should still read it. It's all. No, I can read, I can, I can read it.
Yeah. And you do that and send me, uh, comments and fill in.
Okay, so, good, of course, just, we do this and send in your feedback?
Mm-hmm.
You do that. And then the Route Two corridor is here as well. Or notes on that one? Um, oh, yeah. So we have until Thursday to reply with any feedback that we have. Um, did everybody get this email? Did you forward this?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can just do the survey. Act number one, ethics, state ethics commission, pre-conflict of interest law. Thursday, July twenty-fifth and Thursday, September twenty-sixth. Oh, we all due for that now? Or you, you sent us a notice when we do, right?
Um, everybody is up to date on this.
Yeah, we're all, okay.
Yeah, the conflict of interest law, but this is ethics training, which is if you want to have a refresher, there's probably a question and answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if that's something you wanna do or haven't done yet, you might want to.
I did the online training.
Okay, oh, today?
You do it online, then you're on talent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, very good. Uh, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative.
There's another, um, self-paced learning classes.
Okay. And then the Townsend Mass Online Code Searching Tool.
Yep.
And. I mean, I'll take planning board member resource library, that's online now.
That's me.
Okay, is there any other correspondence?
It does, yeah, there's a couple of them.
It's like two or three. That was from. Some notices I, I read online. Yeah, I think it was like two or three, um, one was from Broughton.
Ah, there we go, all right. Uh, Town of Pepperell, Board of Appeals, Notice of Decision to a Stefan Kakaria for a special permit to allow a home occupation for an office for a nurse staffing agency located at forty-six Main Street, Pepperell, Mass, Census Map twenty-three, parcel eighty-two dash zero, owned by Stephen Stefan Kakaria. Uh, decision is on file with the town clerk. Notice. Uh, notice to applicant, having received certification from the town clerk, it shall be the responsibility to record this. There's the decision. That's the decision.
Couldn't find the decision when I read it.
I don't see a clear decision on here. I don't see a decision on that. So we'll go to the next one. Uh, Town of Pepperell, Board of Appeals to, um, Charne Sofer. Uh, oh, you know, two. All right, so this has granted a special permit to allow a home occupation for the purpose of one-on-one physical training. Property located sixty-eight Brookline Street, Pepperell, Mass, as shown on tax map nine, parcel forty-eight, lot twelve in the town resident district owned by Charina Sofer. Uh, the decision of the zoning board of appeals is on file with the papers of this matter at the town clerk. Town of Broughton, Zoning Board of Appeals, Notice of Decision, A Comprehensive Permit Application, Zoning Board of Appeals, Cow Pond, Brook Road, Heritage Landing. Notice is hereby given that the Grotton Zoning Board of Appeals has voted to approve with conditions a comprehensive permit pursuant to Master Law C forty-B and the code of the Town of Broughton, chapter three hundred and thirty-eight, two, applicant DEFCON one LLC. Two ninety Broadway Road in Trickett, landowner DEFCON one. Uh, property is Cowbon, Cow Pond, Brook Road. So, and there you go. Uh, another one, Town of Broughton, Public Hearing Notice, Notice, Monarch Path, Definitive Plan Modification. Public hearing will be held Thursday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM at the town hall to consider a request submitted by Ibrahim, uh, Masahadine to modify the definitive plan for Monarch Path subdivision. The applicant seeks to modify the stormwater management system and drainage easements in the subdivision as shown on the plan entitled Easement Plan Noble Path, Broughton, Massachusetts, prepared by TF Moran Inc., dated July second, twenty twenty-four. Copies of information is available at the town hall. That's all, okay?
So I would just, uh, recommend to Patrick, we would like to review some of the planning board meetings where we made the decision on twenty-two Main Street. Um, I rely heavily on Robert because he's an engineer, and you're an engineer, and I know that he scrutinized the plans. And we've all had experience with the previous engineers of the plan we were looking at. And, uh, I have the highest respect for them, you know, so I just think that you should view the meetings and see that we did our due diligence.
Oh, I'm sure you did your due diligence.
Some of what was stated is not correct.
The, um, problem here, I mean, as an overview, this was a building that was a residence.
Something on change of use.
Change of use for an veterinary hospital. Modifications to do that code-wise are pretty serious. And then the site limitations were very serious.
This is the one next to McDonald's?
Yeah.
Um, and then septic and the stormwater drainage, and then the proximity to the driveways on Route one nineteen. And then that previous engineer had a really challenging project, you know? I could see where he did everything he could do to accommodate this program. And so we finally got it down, and it all seemed to work okay. With the exception, I was a little reservation about the state highway approving that driveway. With the exception of that, it was approved. She went, did her own thing, like where the handicap rest is supposed to be.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
And everything's so critical on that site, it's, I knew it wasn't gonna work. So, um, I don't know what this guy's gonna be able to do.
I think it's important to really strongly communicate it to the applicant that do not, you know, that, you know, you push on one thing and then you screw up five other things so that it's gotta be done to plan.
I think we did, we, I coached her.
Again, again, again.
Initiations and suggestions on how this could be done.
Yeah.
At no charge. Um, okay, so I did have an addition here, it, three point three, it, actually, it's an addition, I just missed it, and I do apologize. But, um, Anna prepared a right-of-entry template. Um, would this have to be like what we just did for, uh, West Meadow?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, this is, yeah, for the stormwater observance, if something is wrong, right?
It's a right-of-entry agreement. So the, the stormwater management system owner has to grant that right to pass, if you will, in the event that the stormwater management system fails. It allows the town the, uh, ability to go in and either fix the system or, you know, make the adjustments necessary in the event that it's impacted in public way and it's failed. So it's like, in these, all these different circumstances have to align, but it still has to be granted legally. So that's the document that Town Council drew up for you. And then we add that to the application to get it to the applicant, so they know exactly what they need to do to comply.
So just a little background to that, when we had this come up, um, we're that we're now not the owners, the applicant, the original applicant was now not the owners of the two properties, if you remember.
Right.
Um, they had come up with an agreement between them and then with the town. Well, it was modified a little bit, and we approved that, but we, uh, we asked Town Council to set up a template like this so that, um, those, if we ever got into a situation again, they would not be hand draw, handwriting, basically is what it was, but making up.
Right, we have a template to, and they would have.
And this is what's written and approved by him. So as Beth said, it can be handed out to somebody should something like that happen, so.
Well, wouldn't it be handed out when someone applies for a stormwater permit, so it's gonna be done ahead of time?
Yes.
So that if there is a need for.
Right, exactly, yeah, part of the package.
Okay.
Every, every day we get a different situation that brings up something else that we need, you know, so. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the right-of-entry, uh, template that our attorney has drafted to include in the stormwater application. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous, and, um, thank Anna for that. And I'm so, I'm sorry, I didn't follow my agenda.
That's okay.
Okay, so our next meetings are August twelfth and August twenty-sixth. And just a heads up, I will not be here August twenty-sixth. So, before that, Carol is my vice chair. We're gonna have the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth. And I'm gonna give you the paperwork so that you'll be able to appoint, um, Patrick.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.